Pardon and join us in the place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we have additions.
Yeah, I have two additions. One of them, Mr. Berman let me know way in advance and I just got it in my stack of stuff to do. I'm in fit. It's the CASA agreement. And we have solar advisory board opposition.
Okay, and I have one other at 1:30. The sheriff was asking for a couple minutes. Any other additions or additions? All right, with that, we'll get right into it. Uh, we, our one o'clock item is CASA requests. So come on up if you have. For the record, take your name.
Hi, my name is Tina Aguilar, and I'm program manager for CASA here in Lake County. I have a little slideshow presentation and this is just for information. You can look at this at your leisure. And I have something I'd like to read. So this is from my, my boss, Mary Collard, our executive director. She would like me to read this to you. Dear Lake County Commissioners, as you may or may not be aware, after more than eight years without Lake County, or without, Lake County now has an active CASA program. CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate and is a Supreme Court mandated program. Since the new program was accepted in July by the National CASA, Oregon now has a program in every county. So for eight years, Lake County was the only county that did not have CASA. We are under the administration of CASA of Eastern Oregon, who serves the children in Baker, Malheur, and Union Counties in addition to Orange County Lake. At this time, we're getting all of our local operations set up. I myself, Tina, began my position as the local program manager in May and has been working entirely to recruit volunteers and spread awareness to ensure we have a local presence. We will be assigned our first case within the month with a goal of assigning every child who is in need of one a trained CASA by the end of 2021. We are respectfully requesting the use of a small office space in the courthouse. This currently vacant space would serve as the local CASA office where our advocates could consult with staff. This would also serve as a great working space for an advocate when they are waiting for court hearings and are between meetings. At this time, we have one advocate in addition to myself and we both live at least 30 minutes away from the courthouse. I live in Paisley and my volunteer lives out in Druths. Um, this space would be very efficient use of volunteer time as well as give an important local presence in the courthouse. Since our funding is limited, currently we are maintaining solely on the minimum legislative dispersment and a grant from the Ford Family Foundation. We are requesting consideration of this space as an in-kind support for the local commissions. We would also ask that you consider supporting our growing CASA program in your budget for the fiscal year and add us to your future budget. It is very important for our community to support this important program so that we can ensure a continued voice for our children. They have waited too long. We appreciate your time, consideration, and our request and are happy to answer any questions that will help make your decision. Respectfully, Mary and myself. So I hope you guys can see this. This is a slideshow. Support appointed special advocates for children. When a child enters the dependency system because of abuse, neglect, or abandonment, a judge is required by state and federal law to appoint an advocate, also called, also called a guardian ad litem, G A L for the child. In Oregon, we're called CASA. So the history on CASA, the volunteer guardian ad litem program began in King County, Seattle, Washington, in 1977. It was founded by Judge David Sukup and was later renamed CASA by a stakeholder in the committee. The premise of the CASA program is to train community members as volunteer advocates, providing their unique perspective to the courts. CASA's role and the state's roles. It is the state's responsibility to protect our community's children from further abuse or neglect, including providing support and services to the parents with a goal towards reunification. It is CASA's responsibility to represent the best interests of the children and advocate for them within the child welfare system and in the courts. Here's some websites if you guys are interested. I can make sure you get this information, those websites for you to do some research on your own. What we do, we investigate and gather information on the relevant history, environment relationships, and the needs of a child after they come into care. We facilitate and collaborate relationships between all parties involved in a case. We advocate for the child's best interest and we monitor the case and make independent recommendations to the court. What we do, there are different levels of CASA volunteer participation. We'll casework, oh, what, yeah, what do we do? And visits only administrative tasks. An average time spent on casework by CASA volunteers is five to 10 hours per week. Why is CASA essential to the safety of the children? Caseworkers often carry very large caseloads and they focus on the entire family and supporting the safety and wellbeing of the children. The CASA program brings a trained volunteer's perspective to the situation with more time to primarily focus on the best interests of the children. Caseworker turnover is high and a child may have multiple workers over their time to care. The CASA volunteer is often the one consistent adult in the child's life during the course of the case. So we like to just make sure of it when a kid comes into care, that one person assigned to that kid the entire time they go through the system, which is approximately two years. So we're the one consistent person that child's like. They can change foster homes, they can get a different caseworker, but we try to make sure we are that one consistent person that entire time that kid is in here. Why is CASA essential to the safety of the children? A child may be placed in various homes and attend several different schools, disrupting their stability. The CASA program strives to create a measure of consistency and stability by placing a volunteer within the child for the duration of that particular child's case. This puts the volunteer in a unique position to establish a healthy rapport that will trust, promote resilience in the child by assessing a child's needs and advocating for their wellbeing. Lake County statistics for 2018. Abuse and neglect victims for 1,000 ages zero to 17 is 25.9%. That's the most recent rate that I have for 2018. Most recent number is 40. Previous year rate is 37.2. Most recent Oregon average is 14.4 and we rank 30. Children in foster care is 9%. Most recent number is 14. Previous year rate is 2.5%. Most recent Oregon average is 1.2% and rank is 12. Foster care aging out, most recent rate is 33%. Most recent number is two. Previous year is 14%. And the most recent Oregon average is 8% and we rank 34. Foster care placement stability, most recent rate is 50%. Most recent number is five. Previous year is 85.7. And most recent Oregon average is 60% with a rank of 32. Screening and training. Interview and screening process. We do background checks, 30 hours of pre-screening training, a combination of classroom training via Zoom, and home study, use approved National CASA curriculum sworn in as an officer of the court by the local judge. 12 hours per year of in-service training and ongoing coaching and support by CASA program specialists.
So Tina, if we can't see that, so if it'd be more comfortable for you to sit and just read it to us, that'd be great.
Thank you. Arms of honesty. Okay, what CASA does not do is we do not provide services to the parent or the children. We do not act as a big brother or sister. We do not transport the children. We do not give the children gifts and we do not supervise parent visitation. Why your help is needed? We are children's hope for today's and they are our hope for tomorrow. Program, uh, the CASA program is at its best when volunteers are advocating for the children with support from staff. There are 18 children in Lake County without a volunteer advocate at this time. The health, safety, and wellbeing of the children in Lake County depend upon our active involvement in their lives. Thoughts from a current CASA, this person who is currently in CASA states. I'm very proud to be a CASA. It's one of the things in my life that has meaning. Being a CASA has taught me a lot. It has taught me to have courage and to speak up as needed for the child that depends on my voice to speak for her and to be her advocate. It's not always easy. Sometimes it's very stressful. It can come in waves, the good and the hard. I also appreciate this time in my life that I have been able to be a CASA. Be the difference you want to see in our community. As a CASA supporter and our advocate, you will be part of a unique and vital program that is making a significant difference in the lives of abused and neglected children in our community. If you believe the children deserve a safe, permanent home, we encourage you to utilize your experience and skills. So if you know of anyone, you get old. What's next? Action items. Obtain a letter of support from the local judge that has been completed. Identify at least one local funding source toward long-term sustainability. We have a current request in. Hopefully, we will also have that support from you. ID a local attorney willing to provide legal guidance and advice as needed pro bono if available. That's been completed. An ID office space donated if possible for confidentiality needs could take place. CASA supervision with volunteers. Volunteers with children will also need to consider confidential file storage. Current request with you guys. And we thank you. And if you have any questions?
Please, the attorney may offer advice on a court or a local CASA office.
I don't know if that is local with us or if that is through Baker or Malheur County. I'd have to ask that question. I'm still.
So you, you did quite a few different things here actually. Not only office space, but financial support plus other support if there was an office space there. So we have to take all of that into consideration. Um, I've been here long enough. We've had a CASA office here before downstairs. One of the challenges today is office space, do we have available? And if we have any available, it is the privacy for you to work with these children and interaction of other departments within that space may be available. So, so there's a uniqueness that we as a board and our facilities person have to talk about. I don't have any recommendations based right now. I guess is the courthouse the best place or is there other, other agencies or other entities where that for the privacy of the kids and for the unique.
I don't think we would be meeting any children here in the courthouse. We would be meeting the children in their home. We would need this office space for when we come in for our dependency hearings or when I come in for NDT meetings, to have a place to meet with the advocates in the office, be able to do our discovery, do our reports, um, gather our information and sit as a team, as adults, not really meeting with children here in the courthouse. We do that in their environment. We don't want to take them out of their environment. We want to meet within their environment and talk with them in their home.
That clarifies quite a bit against what I heard you on your presentation saying the privacy. So I assume that you have time to meet with the parents or the kids. And then if we have interaction with other entities with them, they can provide.
Privacy in respect to a place where we can close the door, we can keep our files, our files unlocked. And we, um, it's, you know, we don't want other people to know what's, what's going on. Kind of like an NDT where they pass out the paperwork and then they take it back at the end of the meeting. Cause that's not something that's typical.
And when you're passing financial support, so appropriate process for that will be, you know, be there in the, in the budget. Lots of help you were there on the county operations outside of county operations. I don't know if our project, but just to put that out there. And if we can use it as a, I'm not sure we put it as a, do you like?
And I, if you want to.
Jake, you have a comment? If they need a place to be on an irregular basis or regular basis, we have a calendar system for June and October. That might be short term, short term. We have talked about that. And then there's also, we may or may not have room for a body cabinet if you need to keep something down there and lock it up. I don't know that we have one that's working locked. But if you guys have one and want to bring, lock it up, we can probably find some space for that. As a short-term plan until something bigger comes along.
So there's, we, we have quite a bit of discussion internally and externally probably that we're going to have to take a look at. Appreciate you putting that out there. We have to, not to make a decision today, we have to explore this. Take a look at it and see what are options.
Well, thank you for putting me on your schedule and listening to my pitch.
Well, we appreciate it very much. Appreciate the way you do. Thank you. Well, we got a few more minutes. Mr. Berman, see if we can't rocket through you. You have this information, our information for today, CASA payment agreements. And we also have requests for the purchase of a, for payment agreement.
Um, you guys know we've been working on a CRISPR, on a CRISPR grant in our law. For our CRISPR grant. So CASA rail will be taking the responsibility of paying for long that. So this is just the agreement between Lake County and CASA rail. Toby, for CRISPR, what is going to be forward?
So a little bit of an overview, quite a bit of public here is, uh, our CRISPR grant, $5 million roughly, has a match amount, which we're looking at as part of that match at the loan agreement through Business Oregon. The repayment of that loan, the burden of that loan will be on the backs of the shipers through our operator rail, which is CASA rail. This agreement lays out how that structure is and how that payment will happen. So thank you for the hard work on that update on the CRISPR grant, the scope of work and everything. We'll get much closer to when the, what the dollars come available. And whenever we do that, as we use our match to go toward the way up, the only obligations for the amount that we use for, don't offer a loan for 2.9 million. Doesn't even want to take all of my time. You guys know this, I'm just talking to this in public here. So exposure to the county general fund through the railroad is, this is, we need that exposure. Does he mean that there's no exposure to the rest of them? The only thing I see on this agreement data that I'd like to change, and I apologize, I didn't get this to you, is I would like to see on the signature page be all three commissioners. It just has Lake County by and if you could get that driven part of it. Or do you guys have questions or thought on it?
The only question I have here is, do we need to have the interest rate on the stock?
That, that's a, that's a contractual agreement between us and Business Oregon that's separate.
So in that, in that agreement, have a.
Yeah. Been passed legal counsel, been passed all three of us more than once. And we're at the point to sign this agreement that's will be implemented as the first payment comes in the surcharge of the DM from this shipper. And the shipper's not blind to this, this agreement.
So Dave, have, have we made any headway on when we can actually start?
Well, we're, as far as the CRISPR grant, we haven't got a letter received yet. The official FRA, or if you call them that, people look over everything, the scope of work. It's in their, on their desk now and they're looking, looking at it right now. So we're just waiting for the letter to receive. Once that letter is received, we can.
And this is sort of part of all of the information they need. They know that we're getting the loan, but the more that we show we're ready to go forward in all sorts of places that people report forward, I guess.
There are a few, we need to state why we've done the loan and, um, instead of trying elsewhere.
Sure.
Film on how we, what's the state, state is going to.
Sure, I can give a quick overview. I'm going to get to alcohol code related. So, um, as we were lucky enough to get this CRISPR grant by the hand on, whatever million it is, it's almost one, one match, according to 86, 52% match. We went to the Oregon Legislature. We got on the agenda. We worked really hard, many different trips, different presentations. We got on the agenda. We succeeded and was getting $3.1 million from the state of Oregon. And so we had the high buys, we were happy. There was the walkout during the session. Captain Craig, and there's no action taken on the loss that. So we had the board commissioners look, look around and see how do we, how do we keep this 5.1 million CRISPR? How do we match that? So now our task was trying to replenish that 3.1 million as part of the almost 5 million match. We went to Business Oregon, talked to them, were able to get a loan, a very low interest loan. It should be around 2% range. We have an agreement with them to draw that down absolutely. So that's how we ended up going for a loan. Other option we could do is borrow from ourselves, I mean, another department or wherever we have cash. But our money can probably make more in the state pool than probably to get interest in the state business. Oregon.
When I, when I called on the interest rate at the time, it was 2.16.
Yeah. So, um, that's how we got to where we're at today. It's a huge thing for, this, this isn't being done only because of Red Rock. This is being done because of Rosano and Cornerstone. We've got to keep those jobs. This is sustainable even without Red Rock. And that's why it's set up. We had to look at it that way. So the burden falls upon the shippers that we have. Red Rock comes on, it just adds to the pot to get some of that burden off of the current shipper. That, good enough overview?
That's great.
So for action tomorrow.
I'm good with your suggestion in terms of adding the additional sales responsibility.
All right. You have one other item.
Yeah. We're in need of a new lawnmower, gave out on us this summer. Purchase a lawn, which we can already are.
Jeremy and Biscuit didn't do it. I would say fine, but since you're alone with a push mower.
I don't mind. Unless I have anything more to do with you guys.
So.
You say though.
Sorry guys.
Just kidding.
No, you're, you're all right.
So Dave, the longevity out of the last one, you know, it was about eight years.
Uh, five years.
Five years.
And, and we did purchase that one and it wasn't a commercial grade. We probably shipped it back and did a commercial grade and we figured.
It's quite a stretch to go buy it back.
Right. I'm just that. So we, we ran it. Your grill, one of the hydraulic pumps went out, we had to replace it. Quite expensive to replace it and it hasn't happened again. Well, it's just neck and dyming us, so we decided to retire that one and.
No.
In a commercial grade.
So, so with that, the one we have still has some value.
Yes, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna hand that down to the airport. Where does be responsible for the repair of it and, uh, the little to boot. I don't know what that is yet.
So there will be, uh, it's not just a gifted tool, they will purchase it.
Right, yes.
At a fair, fair price.
Yes.
And that would offset the cost of. Were there questions to me? I have no questions.
So why, why went out for three quarts? Uh, went to, uh, Cabot, I went to Cub, Cub, to Dad and John Dare. And John Dare gave us the best deal for Monday. They were a little bit more money, but they gave us a discount because we do business with them quite often. So they gave us a $2,100 discount with this kind of difference in the year.
Well, not only that, but I think luckily it's off season and that's one reason why I'm left here too. Not only credit, I'm here to be buying a lawnmower. It doesn't seem like it, you go get your best price.
Yeah.
That's for action item tomorrow. Any other questions? That all we have from you today. Any other, any quick updates or anything? We got one minute.
I don't have any right off my head.
Right. Thank you, sir. So that's just about a minute here.
Sure, you might, if you need it slightly from the agenda and the other things go on. The public health, the 16th Amendment, that's something we can actually do.
Either, what's, we can, we can do it pretty quick. Obviously, it's real simple, but.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Wait, maybe another person.
Go ahead, let me, let. I was thinking we could just, I was thinking we could just put that to the side and just wait on that. Just, we've got a lot of other folks here. I was thinking maybe we can make sure of that. Make sure it's up. But that's just my suggestion, Chair. We can, we can.
I have, I have the sheriff at 1:30, so if you would like to get this OHA.
No, no, the sheriff's not on that 1:30 16th amendment for OHA.
Yes, that's, as an addition, I'm very, I'm very.
Oh, oh, well, I didn't know that. It's not on my agenda. I think we should go to one with the sheriff.
Okay. I, I thought I mean, whatever, I didn't turn that edition.
Nope, nope. I haven't seen that, sorry.
You're up. Come on up, Sheriff.
I have the floor.
Thank you. Please come in, try to social distance for your match.
Uh, Deputy Kinsley, if you would come forward, please. If you could stand over there, I, you make me happy. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Deputy Kinsley's family. It's quite a dating, daughter, brother-in-law, sister-in-law, of course, Commissioner. We're here today to recognize Deputy Kinsley for a situation he was involved in September twelve. On September twelve, Deputy Kinsley walked into a police officer's nightmare. He faced death as well as having to make a choice of taking one. Now, we're not here today to recognize Deputy Kinsley for the taking of a life. Taking of a life in any situation is horrible. Hopefully that none of us ever have to do that in our career, but we recognize when we take this job that sometimes we have to. But we're here to recognize Deputy Kinsley for his bravery, his decisiveness, his restraint with dealing with this horrific situation. On Saturday, July eleven, North Lake deputies took Terry Dixon into protective custody for threatening to commit suicide in a fire. He was taken to the Lake District Hospital where he was committed. He was given a mental evaluation. And then shortly thereafter, he was cleared, deemed not to be a threat to himself. He was placed in the motel where he left the motel, the motel, went home, took his some family possessions and a Glock pistol in return to the motel. On September twelfth, Deputy Kinsley responded to Interstate Eight Motel regarding shots being fired in room one twelve. Deputy Kinsley arrived and was surveilled in the room when Dixon emerged with a gun in his hand, pointing it at Deputy Kinsley. After multiple warnings, dropped the gun, Dixon began to retreat into his room, pointing the gun at Deputy Kinsley. Deputy Kinsley discharged one round, striking Dixon in the chest. Dixon was later found deceased inside his room. The Oregon State Police assumed primary responsibility of the investigation. Upon completion of the investigation, the case was presented to the Lake County Grand Jury on Tuesday, October thirteenth. The Lake County Grand Jury determined the use of force under O R S and House Bill four thirty was justifiable. On October fifteenth, the Lake County Sheriff's Office convened the deadly force review board to determine if the use of force utilized by Deputy Kinsley within the guidelines of Lake County's Sheriff's Office policy and procedures. The board, by five zero decision, concluded the use of force utilized on September twelfth was within the guidelines of the Sheriff's Office policies and procedures. The board also concluded the use of force review book necessary and within the Oregon State statutes as it relates to the law enforcement officer's authority to use deadly force. Deputy Kinsley has been returned to duty without any restrictions. I have to say from a personal perspective, I'm extremely proud of Deputy Kinsley's actions and demeanor during the terrible situation. It's my opinion Deputy Kinsley acted honorably and with extreme diligence and restraint. Placing his own safety at risk for the welfare of multiple citizens present at the time of this situation. Deputy Kinsley, the community of Lake County thanks you for your honorable actions in keeping the citizens and the community safe. Congratulations. This is the award from Lake County Sheriff's Office. This is Lake County Sheriff's Office Deputy Craig Kinsley, seven two four, meritorious conduct, September twelfth, two thousand.
You're not allowed to say it. Absolutely. It's real hard for me. Hang with me. It's family. It's Chinese. Very proud of Craig. First and foremost is our Sheriff's Department. I'm proud. I am the chief of everyone's. For all my years as Commissioner of Oregon, you worry about your citizens. You worry about not having a backup. You worry about your citizens. This is proof of how well trained we're mentally. Very proud of Craig, very proud of the Sheriff's Department. That's sincere. With that, we're going to take about a five minute break from the different composure and you guys can thank the hero with my views.
Can you guys shoot cats one more time and I can put it on Facebook?
Sure.
Also, I'd like to make it very clear that this award is not from me. It's from our entire office. It's from all the men and women in the office that work with Craig on a daily basis that consider him a brother. And we're just so thankful that it turned out the way it did as opposed to turning out bad. Can I get the one with Rick and Paul and? Yeah, we're taking the break. You good? Yeah. Get a Kodak.
Please take your masks off.
You can keep yours on.
It's good if I do like to read. Oh, I think I missed that, Rick.
Yeah.
Okay, we got it.
Probably good. Yeah.
No, no, we all. I sorry, but I I just, I think I just grabbed.
So let's, let's go ahead. That amendment. We know that our public health director is very busy, can't be here. I think we all probably respond to her that this is sort of business as usual. Melanie, James, do you have any? Well, discussion on this for.
Yeah, you know, you know I do. I know you do. Get ready.
Get ready. So let it rip, partner.
Well, when I first looked at it, I actually got the years mixed up on the fiscal year. We've got twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. If you'll look, there's a decrease on the one page, on page four, the sixteenth amendment. It's a decrease of one hundred and six thousand. It's on page four.
Yes, it is page four.
Yep.
The word.
So in other words, they're they're wanting our public health to do more work.
So well, that's, that's what I was really puzzled by. And so I don't know how the state does this, but this is just very puzzling to me. So if you'll look on page three, at the top of page three. Oh, that's okay. Being serious.
I'm looking at all. Yes. I appreciate that you go through.
Well, the we've got July one, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And you'll go down COVID nineteen response, COVID nineteen local active monitoring. You'll see a decrease of thirty two fifty four. Now, at first light, you're thinking, why is that decrease? It doesn't make any sense. And maybe someone could give me some answers on this because that's true July of nineteen through June of twenty one. We really didn't have anything allocated to us for those purposes at that point. So why is there a decrease to let alone even the line item?
Unless they took a. So to page.
But it's under COVID, under the in the next page, under page six. It goes from twenty twenty, from July one, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. You see the increase for the exact same amount. In both those line items, for COVID nineteen response and COVID nineteen local active monitoring of fifty four thousand dollars in one and thirty two thousand dollars in the other. So why the decrease on a fiscal year where we hadn't even budgeted for those things? So and an increase on the year that we actually did have a line item.
You know, may I give you my unofficial response to that? So it was a financial assistance award, assistance award. We did not use those dollars. So for those dollars to be carried forward, they're amending that, reduce and what we didn't spend. And what reduced, did spend moving on to the next year. So it's available to be spent. Well, that's, that's my understanding.
And then taking the COVID money out.
But there was no COVID money. For the nineteen.
Would be probably here. I understand that, but. So there's part of the.
Excuse me?
Isn't this the nineteen?
Yeah, so we're going into the twenty twenty one. And this is going from July.
It started in twenty.
Yeah, to what? Correct, but this is an award period from July one through June thirtieth. And we've kind of ended everything on June thirtieth of the nineteen to twenty. So now we're on the twenty twenty one budget at the moment.
So so what it is, is taking the dollars in this this current fiscal year, nineteen twenty. Saying you're not going to spend those dollars and we're going to carry those dollars forward to your twenty twenty one budget, which is attachment B for the amount that you're not spending.
Through.
That's the way I.
Through June twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
From July one.
That's the way I read it.
Okay.
Doesn't mean I'm absolutely right.
Well, it's just puzzling how they have that in there. And and as you will see, and I did anticipate this, however, the one decrease that they have, and I I imagine the sixteenth amendment, everything from. It's page six. Yeah, everything from page six on. Honestly, that's what we're really looking at and focused on. But it puzzled me on prior year application. This year, they have to decrease fourteen thousand four hundred and nine dollars from the tobacco prevention education program. So that's no longer priority as far as tobacco prevention.
Yeah, there are all kinds of amendments coming through.
Yeah, I know. I'm just. But I guess, however. It looks like there's an increase when you go to page seven. Overall, the fully, the full increase to the budget is about seventy two thousand. You see a slight increase on governance program implementation. That's the last item for the sub total. Sort of one thousand dollars. But they say that's an increase. You go back to the previous year that it was a decrease of a hundred and six. So a decrease over a hundred thousand, but the increased seventy, seventy two, seventy three. So just for the boards, this is the second, the second issue that I had. If this were the board's understanding and acknowledgement, we are getting less money. But again, going back to Commissioner Albersen's point. We're expecting to do more.
So for less money to come in, it's tobacco prevention education programs, fourteen thousand dollars, four hundred and nine dollars less. Because we gotta make sure we're talking the specifics. Public health has so many different programs.
Right.
Which means we're talking an overall dollar amount.
Yeah.
But the programs within there, whenever we say it's going to be this much less or however, what programs are going to be less. And then that's where that if it's a program that we really are passionate about, which we need for our community, we fight for, for that to be replenished. But that.
Well, I, and then again, that decreases the tobacco prevention program to twelve thousand dollars total. They have all the same reporting requirements. They have all the same bookwork. They have all the same jobs they have to do before. They just have half the money, less than half the money to just even administer the program. And not enough funded appropriately.
So so why are you taking up a bit more? I'm doing the commission. For more tax on cigarettes. Why, why is money going down to for tobacco?
As well as I just wanted to, as I, as I go through this, my frustration is on this. The cost of administering the program itself are sometimes far lower costly than the money that you get from the cigarette type of funding program. Yeah, absolutely. And to actually get services to our people.
Absolutely.
And so we decrease the budget that size by over half of it. Are we actually providing any services to the public at all, or are we just covering the time it takes us to provide the resources? Yes, okay. All right, we're on the top page. That's all I got.
We're out tonight and tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
All right. If you have further questions that I hear before I could answer, if you can get a call in or a public health director, you may all come to. I have to go say.
Having. Um, on the budget side, there might be some questions to the fiscal officer for our contract hospital.
Absolutely.
On some of that. On a serious note. Yeah, and and I think the hospital is already looking at those things in terms of. You know, the dollars that are passing through the state from the feds and passing through this, through us from the state. And coming down to administer these services, the hospital carries the contract to administer these services and make sure that these are getting out there. But the amount of work and everything else due to the requirements put on it from the state are quite costly. And I think the hospital is taking a little risk and the health district is going to have to evaluate whether or not it might actually be a cheaper decision to administer some of these services themselves.
Well, and the fault bound to if you go to our A O C little thing, or these mandates, you know, underfunded mandates, because they're not mandates.
Right, and in some counties, you know, that if you base it on a percentage, some county is going to be with me, you know, seven thousand dollars to administer a program. They'd be looking at seventy. They'd be looking at seven hundred thousand or something, which covers a lot of the reported costs and everything else, but actually has something left over to provide services to the public. But in Lake County, because of our limited population, because of the piece of the pie, it's so small generally, it barely covers the costs of the reporting requirements if you're safely on. Just, just move the thought as a work session, figure it out.
That's appropriate. Thank you. So we're going to move on. Sheriff, you're up next. You have, you were on the agenda for discussion today, for action tomorrow, for reorganization and looking at sheriff sergeant's position.
Okay. I'm just going to give a brief as to what we are asking for, and then I'm going to let Steph Undersheriff Paul present some statistics and numbers for the commissioners, just as you want. We have been, at least for my tenure, six years without supervision up in the North Lake area. We have three deputies up there right now. We just put another one, make them four. We've had primarily all of our resources down, down south. So we have a supervisor that works down south. And I can honestly say that the problems that we have with the personnel, and when I say problems, just minor things. Are not occurring like we're having up in the North Lake area where there's no supervision. And for the most part, and I've seen this throughout my career, if the officer or deputy has no supervision around, they will make decisions based on what they believe should be done as opposed to was it the best interest of the county, the best interest of the sheriff's office, or the best interest of a victim involved? Sometimes it's short, short cutting investigations. Sometimes it's not completing investigations. I believe that having a supervisor up in in the North Lake area will curtail that and put an end to it. We have some reports that are delinquent by eighteen months. One investigation reached the statute of limitations because there was no monitoring of that investigation by a supervisor. Commissioner Albersen can speak very clearly on that. So my proposal simply is to take a deputy's position and turn that position into a sergeant's position up in the North Lake area. Now, by doing that, we'll have, we're not going to shuffle people. We're not going to shuffle South End people up there and back and up there. We'll make a North Lake deputy, hopefully a sergeant. And by doing that, we'll be able to not only save money, but provide the necessary supervision that we need up in that area that's been lacking for such a long time. I think that the commissioners will agree that your, your liability, the biggest liability that the county of Lake faces is in law enforcement. Whether it be in the jail or whether it be in the field, as we saw with Deputy Kinsley, although that situation in. Um, as we saw with Deputy Kinsley, although that situation that he was involved in was, uh, a hundred percent justifiable, more than likely, there's going to be a lawsuit. So even when we're right, we're wrong, but when we're wrong, we're really wrong. And hopefully the supervision of deputies up in that area will, will reduce the liability, if not eliminate the liability. So with that being said, and I'm sure I forgot some, um, some pertinent information, but UnderSher Paul will give you some statistical information on, on the savings that we are looking at. And we might not be, we might be overlooking something. I don't think so, but if we do, feel free to have questions, so.
So currently, the way that we do our budgets for sheriff salaries and deputies, um, is we list maximum exposure and we put a line item number with each position that, that we fund. Um, with that comes about ten thousand five hundred dollars a year in overtime. Um, in some expenses, as much as twenty two hundred dollars a year in longevity pay and as much as twenty four hundred dollars in certification pay. The average sheriff deputy salary is fifty six thousand a year. So when you put those numbers together, we're roughly seventy one thousand a year for a deputy. Now, that's not a loaded cost, that is their, their wage cost that we're basing our budget figures on. Um, when we requested a South End sergeant, um, a few years back, um, we set that position at sixty five, uh, salary, excuse me, at sixty five to seventy thousand. That excludes, because an exempt position excludes overtime, it excludes, um, longevity pay and certification pay. Um, it allows for, um, holidays to be taken by that person and it allows some in-house flex time to avoid abusing that employee, but also avoids paying overtime for that employee. That employee may be asked to work, um, more hours in one week, but we're very cautious and very gentle and generous with acknowledging that and, and working that out in-house. Um, we're not suggesting in any way, shape, or form that we're going to take advantage of one of our employees and harm them in any way with financial. Um, but we need to look at the best thing for our buck, and we can't seem to get, um, supervision from this end on that end and make that work either. And so we think that more immediate supervision out there, not that we need a babysitter, but more immediate supervision can curtail small things and keep them small and, and deal with them when it comes in. Um, the other thing I would add is our call, call volume between the north and the south end of the county um, has increased every single year, um, since Sheriff Taylor's been here. And my guess and my gut tells me that it's never going to stop increasing. Um, and so we're handling higher and higher and higher call volumes, our, um, the levels of calls that we're seeing have, have significantly increased in the danger factors, the, the officer safety risks. And oftentimes, the supervisors needed to, um, at least give advice or give direction on how the situation should be handled. Um, we've dealt with some firsts in, in my career here this year. Um, the officer involved shooting, uh, failure to use a force, we have homicide. And those, we handled the best we could, we utilized every resource that was available to us, including the Oregon State Police SWAT teams, the Oregon State Police detectives, the Oregon State Police Mobile Crime Line. They'll help anytime we, we get an opportunity to utilize them, but they are also spread thin. And so.
We've also worked with the shoots county on a few things as well.
Yeah, we utilized them on a couple of occasions up on the north end of the county. Um, but we're such a huge county that the response times from here to there to get there and assist is, is really, um, kind of problematic all in itself. So that, I mean, that's the long and the short of it, I'm sorry if I got winded, but, um, cost wise, it, it shouldn't have any significant change in the overall budget picture of it. It will be utilizing funds that are already existing and creating a exempt salary position that the dollar amounts should be roughly the same.
And certainly will not adding any additional costs, um, I don't believe.
The way that you have it, it'll be from five to six thousand dollars, a thousand to five to six thousand dollars cheaper, actually. And then including your overtime and your longevity.
Right. And then one thing that I'd like to add to, the sophistication of the investigations are increasing as we had with the, the, the school threat. Um, I'll, I'll tell you, we, we got a search warrant on that phone to determine who sent the original threat. We couldn't break it, we sent it to the state police, they couldn't break it, we sent it to the FBI, they could not break it. So the sophistication is, is becoming more and more, uh, complex. We need those supervisors to maintain evidence, sometimes it's gone over and they leave the scene and then we're called and said, hey, this is what I have, well, where's evidence? Well, I didn't take it. Um, have you maintained the scene? No, I left the scene. I mean, we just need those things, somebody there to give direction, maintain custody of the scene and tell where they went, because once we leave that scene, you don't get the opportunity to go back and recreate because now the scene is contaminated. So we, we just need that supervisory direction. Not that they're doing this intentionally, but they're getting busier and busier and busier, and as we all know, me included, is the busier you get, you try to shortcut some of the things that seem to be insignificant or not as significant, and we can't be doing that in these investigations.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Pretty simple to support from my position. In today's times, you're not going to change. The impacts, and I hate to go into the COVID world, but the impacts of the COVID world, minimalist suicides, that our state going to less, uh, less criminal charges towards very bad substance abuse, drugs and stuff. It's not only the north end, it's the south end. And for you, UnderSher Paul, our sergeants here, you have plenty to do right here and have to try to run up there and then take care of things. You need the person up there to go take care of things, the major things, you're still going to be there. You, UnderSher Paul, you're going to be there as fast as you can get there. But there's plenty to do both ends, we're just a huge county. This is very simple for me, as any of the commissioners, yeah, I'm the one commissioner, but, um, I support it very much, I think it makes, uh, efficiency sense. I think it makes operational sense. Because of now, some of the things that take your time, or UnderSher Paul's time, that can be handled up there will free you guys up to take care of some things here. That's where I, I appreciate you guys taking the time, working that, I appreciate the budget side of it also. When you mentioned that, I appreciate that you said, I'll look at your views and you're going to stay upon it. That's important, and you guys build it work, you know? So thank you guys for thinking this out. We'll make the decision tomorrow, it will be straightforward, yeah, my support. Thank you.
So with me, not only the efficiency side and, and just the operations side, we have a huge safety factor, we have a huge liability factor. You guys are also going through hell everywhere else in the world with how people are looking at police, policing agencies. And I don't want Lake County to ever be there. I mean, there's not a person that I've talked to, and of course, they wouldn't tell me, but that doesn't completely support our sheriff's office, and I want to keep it that way. And I think that leading has to come from us. I'd love to make a decision today, but I'm not going to.
No decision made, but you're good to go.
Commissioner, thank you very much.
Yep. And thank you guys, I really mean that.
Sheriff.
Thank you guys very much.
So we, we need to have some discussion on solar advisory board application, can I see a member who's here? Probably we can, that, or maybe she just wants to.
She's waiting for that.
Doesn't want to hear it. So, um, you don't want to go back out there, do you?
I'm not looking forward to it, but.
Yeah.
responsibilities.
For the board, what we, we left meeting when we decided to set up an advisory was we have sideboards on.
Can I interrupt your pickup out there, it's going off?
Oh, really?
Yeah, so.
The wind tried to break in, sorry, Brad.
Would you mind interrupt? Would you, would you mind taking care of it?
Nice.
I love baseballs.
See you later, Barry Rice. You can't help the team.
So, um, uh, I, I guess, uh, sort of turn it over to Commissioner Alberton here, is, uh, have you sideboards? Have sideboards and have you, um, have you been able to get together things, run into others of representation? I'm not sure, it seems like a lot of these may be representing the same interests. And, uh, and I don't know how you're structuring this, or how we want to structure this, is who all are going to have as representation and what.
I didn't take the notes from the previous meeting where we talked about this, but there were several individuals on there. There's Fish and Wildlife is going to be on there. A solar company is allowed to be on there. I wanted to put out the applications and then, of course, a commissioner, and it doesn't matter if it's me or whoever. I didn't want to put the sideboards without having the application in at first because, um, for one, I wanted it to be all kosher that we're doing things by book with the county, um, ordinances and that sort of thing. So to put sideboards on it, I haven't really put sideboards on that. But, um, as time goes on with the committee and your bases are, we're actually aware of what we do from, and so other than being a solar advisory board to the county commissioners is where I'm, so. And so I, I want to, so sideboards, we had that discussion as part of it, I guess we still have to have that discussion if you want, for the solar advisory, the sideboards on it. A little different than probably what they can be, because a lot of the goals for a lot of the commissioners, a lot of advisory commissioners, where I just have.
What would you like them to be advising us on?
Yeah.
Exactly, and that's what.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Right now. You're asking that's right now.
Yeah, and so what do you guys want there?
So the, I'm going to jump away from that, because we have applications in front of us. I think the first thing we need to do is approve the who's going to be on this advisory. I mean, not who, but what entities are going to be represented? There are going to be agriculture person representatives, there are going to be, um, roads or highway persons, there are going to be a state agency, there are going to be a solar, pro-solar, anti-solar. What are we going to build a fit slot when somebody applies, or do they fit? So that your R, your advisory group isn't lopsided with all one representation. There might be a need to have a couple on agriculture, or mine, or, or it might be just one for each one. But what is it to do to see market?
I, I think to be a legit advisory board, we need to be advised on pro and negative, and solar. So we can, with the information provided to us, we can make legitimate, we can make decisions on solar. And without me throwing my crucial stuff in there and trying to sway it one way or the other, and the process that you always talk about, does it, does it apply to the process? I mean, I'll be upfront with you, you know, as you well know, I'm opposed to solar on irrigated farm. And I'm putting together the data live, and then I'll bring it to us and present it. And if you guys don't like it, you don't like it, if you do, you do. But at least I'll give you an educated thought of why I want that. But of course, we have to go through the process.
Yeah, and, and I, I appreciate exactly what you're saying, and that's where it gets misleading for the public. If the commissioners don't make the decisions, um, we can, we can, uh, write rules and everything through a process. And that could be that there has to be consideration of irrigated farm ground and what that means. And then if the board is allowed to say, actually, none on irrigated farm land, what does that mean for a land use commission? So there's that. Whenever we had the discussion, Darwin myself was going to.
Darwin's, Darwin is going to be on it as a planning director. And then we're going to have a person from the planning commission on there also.
Okay.
And then that way, we're hitting all sides, um, water users, a few water users, um, now there's others. I apologize. Agriculture, yeah, several agricultural people. We're sending out information to a solar.
I think maybe if you keep it within the boundaries of fact findings and, uh, local community impacts, pros and cons.
Say, say that again, I didn't hear what.
Um, local, sorry.
Community impact.
Should I use this? I should use this, I, I'm global about using this. Okay, you guys use yours all the time and I don't, I, I get lazy.
And then we blow your, your job.
It's all good. The, um, just keep it within the scope of fact findings, this is what a lot of you guys were talking, just try and take some of those. Um, local community impacts, pros and cons. Um, you're looking for how this impacts our community, we are the representatives of Lake County, and we're looking to better understand all the ways this, uh, large scale development or these type of things that might fall on the radar of this committee. Maybe they should take into consideration just looking at how these things could potentially affect our community, both positive and negative. Because you're going to have a lot of different people on the committee, uh, both from the solar companies, you have the, you have our Fish and Wildlife, you have our soil and water. Um, uh, conservation folks, they, they, they're, um, conservation district, you vote for them at the same time you vote for us on the same ballot. And, and those people are spread throughout our home county, and maybe they'd be a good person because they have kind of a unique perspective. But we talked about it.
I think, I think that's a good point, um, I don't know who or what, uh, private property rights activist type person.
I think absolutely.
You know, because all three of us talked about, um, overreach of government and other things. We pay the taxes more, you know, on a public government, and they were telling me about to.
Well, and not, and not only that, Brad, is if we make a decision on the solar, on land use, how's that going to affect us later on when we want to defer land use on the same piece of property? And so we, we have to, these are the things that we have to talk through, and I'm, I'm very thankful that we're doing this. Well, I'm, I'm all willing to do this, we've already, there's a lot of attention on Lake County right now from special interest groups. And so the way to be able to deal with special interest groups is get in front of it. And, um, and that's what I'm looking at doing. One thing that this committee has to fully understand and realize is that there's a process to even change our local ordinance. And there, there, it's not something that, it's just blessed by the board of commissioners and it's done and overlooked. It's something that there's a process, we're in the process for a reason. And, and so this committee has to understand, we, we follow a process. Whenever we look at that process and it's evaluated by the committee, it's, it's, this process is. Whenever we look at that process, and it's evaluated by the committee, it's, it's, this process is open at this time. What is the definite value of doing that, or what is the negative? Is our, is our ordinance, is outdated yet? I'll be first one to say that. There's been some legislation and different things that's happened. So it has to be looked at, to present to the board, this is where we're going. We're you as a board. Finding commission is the instigator of the ordinance, changes the ordinance. Then to the board of commissioners, that's the area process, if that's, that's the way I understand it. So we, we have to understand what we're even asking you for, and get too far down the road. And that's where I suppose, Darwin knows that side much more. I would offer to get a hold of John Jennings, the state level, you know? He might not be the absolute one, but he would be one to help us, he has a lot of years of experience on the land use. Appeals and whatever, I can't remember exactly. Now, you. But it, but anyways, and, um, the other is Annette, because of on the region solutions, she gets right to the directors, knowing their name on state lands and different things. So I, I think, um, I'm all for the committee, said that from the start. So we have to figure out what we're really gonna ask the committee to do and, you know, make sure that we have full representation from. I don't want the committee, I know it's gonna be one of these, I'm assuming, Mark, you show interest, I don't know if that's who's gonna be the commissioner based on the committee. Let you guys sort of work on that, but, um, that commissioner going through those meetings is gonna be, has to be a mediator, moderator, everything else at the same time. It's just what you said, Mark. If, if your passion's gonna go way over here, you may be taking things to the committee, or you might be the one to moderate.
So, okay, I have two things then. If you keep it within the scope of fact findings and just using it more as a tool, we have a better understanding of the community impacts. And you line out the things that bear to consider. And I think just going through the applications, having a better understanding of what everyone else is hoping to get out of it. Uh, you have agricultural regulatory issues, you have farming, water, environmental, ranching, property rights. Those are all in there, in terms of things that people would like to have, um, that why they would like to be on the committee. I mean, those are all good reasons to be on the committee as well. If you, we just say, these are, this is why you're, uh, this is why we're forming the committee, for us to have a better means as a tool, if you're gonna connect, contact, you're not leaving and, uh, speak with the state and the state agencies. Having information that's gathered from the stakeholders and everything else, that we can actually use the tool and say, well, this is what we're seeing. These are the impacts that we're seeing, both positive and negative to our community, maybe we could affect change in whatever legislation comes down, again, we may not be the only people proposing changes to the laws and legislation in the future. So if we're going to make an argument against it, maybe it'd be good to have, if, if it's potentially bad and not good for private property rights, it'd be good to have some information and some data put together by a, uh, a very diametric group of people that can cover a, a, a large range of interests. And they say, well, this is what we're seeing, and we can take that to the legislature as a tool and use and present, say, well, this is what we're seeing in our county. And we're doing a lot of solar development, this is what we, we're noticing. On top of that, my second question is, who would you like to have chair the committee? And, uh, you know, act moderator, would you like it to be one of the commissioners? Or would you like it to be something that the committee itself decides this is the person we'd like to have chair the committee or whatever else?
You, you know, this, this is, it's a good question, it's sort of, uh, not ad hoc, but it's, it's a short-term committee possibly. It may end up being long-term, but right now it's starting out, uh, this way. Usually, um, there's bylaws and stuff, for certain reasons, I know that this is just advisory committee, plenty of bylaws, high. I think a chair of the committee can be excited throughout the committee after the point, it is off the top of my head right now. I really think if there was anybody, it could be, uh, there's a lot of people that's been through the Ford Leadership Program, that can help moderate, not have a dog in the fight and keep the people on the agenda. And I think this is one of those that has real, sort of, to go down a lot of different rapids, a lot of, a lot of personal views are gonna come forward, but we're going back to the facts. Trying to get things that's gonna be useful for our finding commission slash board of commissioners. If there's anybody out there that we could have be a moderator on that. I think somebody right now, uh, she's a great moderator, and she moderated that deal with the, I don't remember if you were there on the table, it was, uh, issues for some stewardship stuff or, a lot of.
Oh.
Oh, she, that's what she does a lot of times, is moderate, and she doesn't pick a side, so it's, it makes it a lot easier to navigate, and she's very handy at it, I can try. I, I think for, to get to the end result, that's not a bad, bad thought at all, there would probably be some cost to that because she probably consults her, does that, deciding. This is important enough to our community, both sides. That might be.
I, I think it'll take.
Over and see.
Yeah.
Just talk to her.
Back to you guys.
If there is a cost, we could work through that too. Well, in, in see, commissioner, both commissioners, that, that would help to get the structure set up so we appoint people to slots.
Like this person represents the interest.
We could ask the moderator, this is what we want. You know how busy each one of us, we're, we're working on this for fifteen minutes, then we're jumping over here for two hours and we're back to this.
Well, and the, and the thought of bringing liability, again, if one of us was the chair, and we in one way or the other, it would look like, like if we were going against.
We were, we were controlling.
It was, it would look like I was trying to maneuver. And let's you put our county in.
So I think, I think we just, I think we just Mel, so rather than.
Ah, what is, we need somebody to
be the moderator.
Yeah.
And be the organizer.
Not a chair, but a moderator, just to escape, nobody's the chair. Have a moderator that puts agenda together. Because it, there's gonna be some challenging moments on some of them.
Well, and if you talk about.
Right, so.
Right, if you talk about anything that's really truly important, you're going to have a lot of those moments.
Yes.
And it's, it's going to be anything.
This is why she's trying to get her master's degree in Oregon State or Oregon, University of Oregon. But she might be able to do it in a moment, so, I would set it up.
But I, I would, I, I'm willing for you to check in on that.
Yep. Any other suggestions?
Absolutely.
Um, and if there's anyone else.
If she gets back to me today, the pricing stuff, we can talk about that too. But, so I'm very. I think it's getting, keeping things moving, keeping things going forward. So on the advisory, the applications we have now, we compile those and keep those, we have the slots open to place people into, is that?
Yeah, I, I'm fine, I'm fine with the slots and, and having people individually represent certain interests. And that way you don't have too much representation for one single subject. Like this is, this would be, this is what you're supposed to look after. And that way they, they stay on the topic for those items.
You don't, you don't want your committee to be all so.
Lopsided.
All solar developers. You don't want it to be all anti-solar, you have to have.
Yeah.
Somebody from everybody, everybody. And, and like we talked before, it sort of has to be somewhat fluid so that the committee can add some people. If, if there's somebody that was totally, you know, a part of our agency or, uh, group.
Then like, it would take a lot of weight off my shoulders because of how much crap that we have to deal with on a daily basis. And, and you made one of the best points, Mark. It doesn't matter if it's me or if you or it's James. Whenever you are to lead on the committee, it influences the committee or con, and it just isn't, not, but that's how our commissioner should be. Commissioner should be putting some input and saying, now this is, I'm gonna represent a personal view at this time, because commissioner, I have to be here. If you're the driving force, it has tendency to lead it down a path that commissioner wants.
And Kim was so good in moderating that other, because she had environmentalists way one way, and then she had guys like me way the other way. And she's driven that along pretty well.
And got some constructive conversations.
And we, and the way that.
So we'll start.
I'm not with you.
Isn't that where we're at?
But I think we can, I think we can approve the applicants or disapprove the applicants we form, or that we have right now. So, have enough leniency, we can put them where we think they are in the committee and then, um, add to it if we decide we need some more representation on there. Are you guys good with that?
So, if you look on the application, uh, of who they're representing, they'll list others, one was solar. I think he told us some solar. The other one's because we don't have slots or anything. No, there's no, I don't have. Garrett listed other solar.
But we can designate that.
But we didn't, our application didn't really fit.
The application.
But because we didn't have them, we don't have slots in the media.
But we, we can designate that, when we kind of know, I mean, one person checked other and wrote solar.
Yeah.
We have four applications. I don't have a problem with any of them, I think all the reasonings for joining are good. We can designate those slots as well. But, uh, I'm comfortable with all of them, Pete did not give any, he didn't really spell out any exact reasons.
So, I have to be the devil's advocate. Everyone these applicants are impacted by one solar project, and stand tight against that project. So we approve all of these, and if we have four pro-solar people come, I'm just gonna double that because you have to remember. I'm just being straightforward.
Well, this goes back to the liability part of it. If we didn't, that would probably be really ugly when we show them.
So, so where I'm at is, is I don't think until whoever we get to moderate gets the what word representation might have. We might have, I, I'm fine with all these applicants, they may fit on different slots. Right now, most of these are gonna fit probably agriculture or a newer.
Just a couple things, I think having the, the idea of a moderator is really, uh, I think is a good idea. Also, Mr. Sheffield from the Soil and Water Conservation District has expressed an interest. He is just looking to see if joining in that committee is time spent. And I think we can all appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and you're right, you cannot have it lopsided because then you come into the liability, there's also, what does it look like? You know, and as much as we hate to say it, appearances do mean a lot.
There's appearance of evil, and I've said enough in public meetings stating my opposition. And if we, we build a one-sided committee but be touting my opposition to irrigated farm land, it's not gonna look good.
Right, you just.
You're gonna have to change.
Um, I, I think.
I'm just wondering.
My.
I, I'm just wondering if, and we get a moderator, if the commissioner should be on there at all. And I'm just saying that because.
You're making very valid points. I see.
There's a reason why we don't really find commission meetings unless it directly impacts county lands that we manage or saw. How many appeals did you have before me and James came on, and then all of a sudden we have all these land use appeals? If we were sitting in those meetings prior, it would be good. Well, and so, you guys see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mel.
So with the, uh, advisory committee that I convene, we don't have a commissioner? And we bring our, well, and I don't, I don't get a vote, I just convene.
Yes, the official, basically on the board.
I administer it, so, and then we bring recommendations to you. So I can see the point of not having a commissioner on it because you guys will be making the decision as a board, but that's up to you.
I, I just, looking at it now, I, I think, I think it'd be better if none of us were on it, especially if we can get somebody like Kim to moderate.
Then again, I'll just play, I don't know who's playing the devil's advocate.
You gotta look to the.
Shots fired. I gotta take. Wheel back. We're gonna be reduced to an advisory role only on every single application, what exactly are we making a decision on? What exactly will we be protecting ourselves from if we're only in advisory position anyway?
The, you're talking board.
I'm talking.
You're talking for the.
As a, as a commissioner, um, say, large-scale solar, um.
That goes through the state.
That goes through FSEC because it doesn't go through us. Large-scale solar doesn't, um, depending on the application, obviously, but what exactly are we protecting ourselves from when we're already reduced to an advisory role only ourselves?
You still have to follow county guidelines.
Oh, absolutely, but you're not, it's not export day contact.
So, we're talking about any of, we're, we're, we narrowed it down to now, yes.
I, I did, I did, because I just see that's where.
Yeah, so, one that's before us that, that can do us in the public meetings, and that's a problem.
Well, I wasn't being, I wasn't being specific at all, just.
No, no, just.
Just.
Definitely.
There's several other applications.
There's several other applications, so, um, and yes, I have to be the devil's advocate. Okay, so pro for the other side of it is, if you are a finding commission and through this, and if our ordinance has direction in there is that Lake County does not support irrigated farm ground being taken out of production unless they meet this criteria, because you're gonna have to some criteria. There is very few things that is absolutely not.
Well, the, the ORS already has a criteria.
Right.
And so, on an ETSa project, not any particular project at all, now gives either pro or con something to take and say, state of Oregon, locally, this is local ordinance, this is the way they are, and they can take that under consideration.
Right, and so I'm not looking to fight anything necessarily, I'm just looking to better educate ourselves and how to process to our weekend.
I think that's what, the main thing I want out of this organization or out of this committee is, they're gonna collect all the data from every hand. We don't have to spend days of our time trying to do that when we go in front of them. And so we could use, we could. And so we could use, we could use the data that our commission has collected. And we've talked through. To make the legit decisions that we need to make.
And so. I, I. I, I see the key person to this, other than a moderator, is our finding director. And he already knows, I've already, I've already let him know he's on there. But I mean, he is, he, because our finding.
He's just like, not told.
He's no longer asking for.
That, that, that is where, where it's at because of our finding director is, is who we rely on. For the facts and the findings, all the keys to commission, staying with them, to make it still true. That's our go-to.
Right.
And so if, if, if there's gonna be a change in ordinance or a change in the direction or, not direction. Change in the way that the finding commission operates as far as ordinance is. Finding director has to be there.
Absolutely, I, I'm, again, we haven't put anything down there about changing ordinances or anything else in terms of the scope. Yeah, purposes of this committee, but that word coming into the picture.
Absolutely. Well, that, you're spot on. I mean. Right, I'm not promoting, promoting changing ordinance.
I, I know you're not.
I'm sorry.
Who's the devil's advocate?
Sure, there, there are so many things to take into consideration here. So many things to take into consideration. And one thing that we have to take into consideration is, I'm very passionate about this, the private property rights. And overreach of government.
So you, you make a very good point, Commissioner, when you say that we have a lot to take into consideration. There is a lot there, and generally, the responsibility is entirely on us to take all this into consideration. Whether it's going through EFSEC or a local process, again, this is, goes back to Commissioner Robinson's point. Having, having someone else, sort of this other body of these other stakeholders to be able to gather the data. And to pull this together, so we have something to actually take into consideration. Even though most of the time we're looking at these things, we're just. Our, our responsibilities and duties are very limited by law.
They, they are, and I appreciate that so much, but I still haven't gotten to be a part of the tail of that committee or. Our, whoever is moderator, what we want from it. I think it's collection of data. For pro or against any.
Fact findings. This is why I got local community impacts.
But, but I'm gonna be on that committee or being moderator.
We're definitely not putting you on there. Sorry.
Sorry. I appreciate, I appreciate your full confidence.
Private property rights, you'd actually be willing to get on.
Yeah, yeah. But. Most committees are gonna want some part of the thought of what we're asking that committee to do. And so we sort of have to give, almost back to the sideboard, is what are we gonna ask that committee to do? Look at solar development within Lake County. Can we make it that global? Are we gonna ask them to look at. Look at the impacts of solar development within Lake County along with our land use policies. What, what do we want out of the committee?
What is your question?
What do we want? Fact, my new thing.
Well, as, well, as far as, you know, what he was saying, maybe we should take this a different route and. Also include. With, you know, have the moderator to take it into account that we would also maybe like them to look at some of our rules and ordinances and stuff maybe as well. Or some of our, is that what you're kind of putting, is that a possibility?
I'm just. Sometimes I belabor things as part of my discussion, so, but I'm just trying to get a little bit more. I'll just tell a story. When Red, Red Rock was cited here, Kentucky's homeless year and a half, thousands and thousands of dollars of that developer. To be able to get their growth boundary changed. And how fucking stupid was that? We have an opportunity, forty-four jobs there, a hundred associated with the clean air, clean water. All these things that come along with it. And the cost that developer, a year and a half's worth of time permitting. And just trying to get their growth boundary changed. To be able to do that, the process was so brutal. That other properties had to be purchased, take out their growth boundary. To go across the street and put sixth year, ninety-eight year. Sometimes we, we as governments, the process aren't conducive to hot. And it's good. So maybe now, there's only seed plot, they're the thing, Red Rock's the worst thing in the world. Myself, I support it and I think that the jobs and on, on force tells right on down, everything I talked about. It's good, but I'm just telling you. What are we gonna ask them to do? We want them to.
Maybe we should say streamline. And modernize our ordinance on solar, maybe.
We can even just say review.
Huh?
We can even just say review it.
Yeah.
Or review.
Yes, no.
What if you have this convener? Like, once you guys decide who should be present, have a meeting. And then have them rank some projects of priority, like, hey, I think you guys can sort of discuss this first.
Right, with, with rank concerns?
Yeah, so say, hey, I think the county should look at ordinances first and then look at this second. But have them as a group prioritize what they think you guys should look at. And then build that into the agenda and then just take off bits at a time, so it's not so overwhelming. But just have that group of collective people say, hey. Because I feel like you guys might be a little overwhelmed because it's such a big topic and there's so many different aspects. Maybe they could take that on as the convener and say, hey, guys. You need to do this and, and then get consensus from that group and then bring that forward to you guys. And start addressing and then start fishing out agendas to them. If that makes sense, or if you're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I just also wanted to, in my earlier comments, when you were talking about, you know, not being lopsided. You know, one of the applicants you had mentioned is with Lou Marmet, who is, you know.
We didn't say Lou Marmet, we said a solar.
A solar, okay. You're right. But anyway, and I don't think that that's a bad idea to have somebody from a current project. Um, but I also would think it might be a good idea to consider. Somebody from a project that has been completed. That you guys have had a good working relationship with to be on that committee. And the reason I say good working relationship is because you know how the communications with that person will work. So I, I would think that that might be a good suggestion too, especially because if you have somebody on the committee who is. From a current solar project that has not been completed. Their views might be very different than a person who has completed the, the project. And not recently completed, but maybe it's been up and running for a year or five years or however long. But then they would have, they would have a different insight too, to, you know, everything from operations to what the soil is doing to everything.
One good thought. I, I like the idea of a moderator. I would, I would like to see if we can find a moderator. Have that moderator and our funding director do each, meet with each one of us individually. To compile our, our thoughts, individual thoughts. The facts and findings, I, I really like. Facts, not findings, I guess, but facts. To sort of keep focus that direction. And what I would tell them is, is we, we need this group to address the challenges of solar. And, and that, that's not challenges in a negative way, that's the challenges of solar. If we do have a big developer, some of the challenges that we've had to work, work through ourselves is our road department. Start now, we have our road department to get notified if there's a conditional use on solar. So there can be a condition on the road. What, what's, what's the challenges, pros and cons of solar, which you guys already said. I'm throwing that out there for thoughts for us to move off the dining room floor. But I think we're all in consensus, moderator. Working directly with our finding director will be. So the agendas are set, timed and framed, and we're gonna get through this on a certain number of meetings. Are extended if necessary. That's sort of my thoughts, pros and cons on that, what do you guys think?
Oh, I think that's good. I just adjusted my notes, consider the challenges, facts, local community impacts, pros and cons to large-scale solar development.
And this, this committee could be, if successful, in things. Solar is the thing right now, there's other development and other land use things that.
Right.
That we may need to have some discussion. As you say, we're getting more and more appeals. We're getting more and more.
Well, yeah.
Lot more people are starting to look at Lake County. And I'm not talking just developments, I'm talking conditional use for homes and things like that. So this, this committee could end up being an advisory committee to the, um, the board of commissioners, but to the finding commission.
And I just, I, I really think that we need as much information as we can take in. About all the impacts and the facts of the cases, because I foresee, this is me. I perceive some issues coming down the pike of. For instance, I will, I fully anticipate the legislation in the next session, whatever the next session looks like. That seven thousand dollars per minute walk will be reduced to thirty-five hundred. And, and then incremental step downs of five percent per year. And I anticipate that will be something that people will be looking at. And of course, that changes a lot, a lot of aspects for us. I'm not looking to limit. Anyone per se, that's not my goal. My goal is to consider. And to represent appropriately the, the interests of the people in Lake County. And that may require us to have as many tools as possible and new facts. So we're not just on soapboxes, we're not just, you know. We justify a lot of the things that we say sometimes with things like, well, this is just my opinion. But if we can have some facts to back it up, I'm speaking for myself.
Because I say that all, don't I, did I?
No, 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 I, I looked around and both of us, and I point at myself when I say that because I say it myself, we, we all do. It's, it's, I think especially in this job as a commissioner. Brad, you have kind of the tag one saying, I'm gonna take my commissioner hat off and go over here. Personally, I don't know if that's possible. You nailed it, my friend. But we, we still have our personal views and feelings that we bring to the table. And if we can have actual facts though, rather than just personal feelings that we're bringing in and saying, get on our soapbox. That's huge to be able to argue some of these points.
Well, EFSEC, you have to have factual information or.
Our bills.
Our appeals.
Yeah, right.
We can't take any emotional appeal or whatever. And we listen to a lot, but it doesn't come into play on the decision-making game. That's just the way we have to work. So, um. I, I, I really feel like, but her people. Being the private property, I was happy because I've already told by James Williams, my application would be thrown in the, in the garbage.
Did I say that? Did I say that? I didn't say that, I just, I.
That's what I heard.
My personal opinion? Actually, okay, so, I'm just gonna throw this out there, go on the record, just not, not. Not to sue over his roof plot, but just to sue the whole thing over and make it clear what I, what I really do mean. I think actually, uh, we need to find something for Brad to do in retirement. And, uh. No, I, I don't mean to buy him off on, on everyone else, though, no. But I, I think actually being a wonderful advocate for private property, because you have the knowledge, you have the history, you have the, the, just the.
I probably will not put in an application, I think I could bring some value, but as a citizen, I, I would. You know the heartache that comes with, with this, India and the past commissioner after December. You have your own baggage too, in the, in the, to carry some weight too, negative arc on it. I, I would be in a position, so I, I appreciate your thoughts very much.
Well, well, just so you know though, Brad, you know, you don't need my vote anyway, you just gotta get two other people to vote for you.
See, you just, you just stabbed me again.
That was, that hit the bow. So the.
Do you have your wife's truck today?
Yes.
That's the alarm going off on it, it's been a while for a while.
I don't have the keys.
Jeremy has them.
Jeremy has them, are Dave Berman, would you check with Dave Berman? Somebody has my keys.
Brad needs to just go home so he can perk out a little.
That thing, it's an emergency situation right now.
Hard to cover.
No, the consensus of the board, so we can get, move on, is, is for you to check on potential, maybe one or more people that would be interested in, in a moderator.
And, um. We've got some sideboards established in terms of, you know, kind of just the subject matter that we're looking for from the advisory committee.
Are you guys comfortable with going forward?
What do you need, Jim?
Do you have, do you have your cell phone to call Jeremy? He's got the keys, he's in the jail, Dave don't have them, Dave don't have his phone. I'm tired of listening to your alarm.
They were supposed to shut it off.
They did once.
Yeah, they already did once.
Can you guys hear it?
Did we take the phone?
I can hear it.
Please, let's do it.
Take a five minute break.
Geez, how long?
I'm sorry, I, I honestly, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you came in for.
Well, I came in to find out what your guys' agenda was. Literally.
Oh?
I know. It's okay, I'll talk to Mel. She got it covered. Know what your agenda was on opening, closing, keep around stuff.
Oh.
Mel filled me in, so.
Still haven't gotten any.
No, I'm trying to figure out stuff too, because Osha isn't.
Oh, you guys.
I'm just trying to figure out what you guys are up to.
Where are you going? Going along with county business?
Being in the, the Gwatis crabs, I guess they call them. So that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks, Tom.
Have a nice day.
So we come back into session at three minutes to three, sorry for the disruption, appreciate the board's indulgence. He's been ready to choose some shots.
He's ready to shoot.
Who, me? I don't know, I'm out of shots. Okay, so. Does somebody want to recap for a wrap? Just, are we good?
I, I'm good. I, I don't think I have any further questions, oh, one thing, approval of the applications.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here that you guys feel is over-representing a certain particular area? Are you looking to hold off? You wanna appoint a couple people at least for now and hold off on the others?
I, I'm, I wanted to keep them all in, so I'd like to.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem with any one person on it.
And then structure.
My, my, my struggle is, is we wanna make sure we're not giving it. Long line, lopsided. Have to refer it in. Or else it's not, you have to pre-do it, right?
I totally agree. To keep things rolling.
So we, we can act on appointments tomorrow, but like, downstairs appointments. I don't have to struggle with that.
Okay.
And your task was looking for a moderator. Correct? And if you guys, so, um, or can't do it. You just make it an alternate. The only alternate I'd like, you would not probably agree with. Nor maybe me or James. Don't leave that for food for thought.
I don't know what that's supposed to mean. I don't want to bring that up.
Okay, I'm good. You're good? All right, so Amanda, did you have anything else to add? All right, so Amanda, did you have anything else to add? I'm sorry, I, I have to look at people when they're talking.
No, you're, you're fine.
I didn't mean to have my back to this.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
I can hear you.
Okay.
No, I think, I'm, I'm good, I think what your guys' plans are, are solid. Like I said, I think it should, I think the moderator idea is a brilliant idea. Um, making sure that it's well-rounded is really important. Having those, um. Guidelines of what you guys are looking for within the committee or the results type thing that you guys are asking of the committee is smart. You know, just because, as you said, you go down that rabbit hole or off on a tangent really easy.
Saw us here today.
Yeah. Yeah, how many times do we have to stop for a while?
One of us except.
But, yeah, and I'm horrible at it, but.
These two guys, firing two shots at once, are the worst.
Yeah, so, and, and I'll.
Yeah, but he goes in a bear den, that's why.
I'll, I'll be the first to admit, I will, I will go off on tangents like nobody's business. So I think having those guidelines is important because it keeps the group on focus and on task.
Amanda, I appreciate those thoughts very much because for it to be productive, we got, that's our duty is try to find out for it to be successful. And I appreciate your thoughts and your appreciation of our work.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving along. We have Summer Lake Fish Wildlife built accounts ratification, so we will act on that today. Dave Knowles, this is payment, live taxes for state lands. We all three signed these for the certification to certify the taxes for the summer lake property. So we'd like to go ahead and ratify that Tuesday's meeting because it's already been signed.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the application of, uh, the. Uh, property tax determination from, uh, the OFW or something.
Well, since it's been made in a segment to accept the certification of taxes for the summer lake fish, wildlife properties, any further discussion? I'm all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My motion carries, ratification is done. So we're fighting for it. What am I missing at this point?
We do have, I, I have another piece, I think I may have picked it up off of my, uh, desk. It's not our agenda for discussion, I just completely skipped over it. This is the Paisley disaster unit.
Tomorrow.
Is that for tomorrow? Okay, and that's why it's in my stack. Okay, I, I didn't bring in my regular session sheet.
So that's okay, so we do have. For a workshop, we need to talk about these things. This is tomorrow, or does somebody come before us?
Yeah, John Jones.
And that's for consideration, I have not fully read it, he had been into our offices, I know.
Yeah, I think they're looking for additional assistance with, uh, help with funding from the Carers Dollars allocation.
So now they're down to twenty four hundred dollars is what they're asking?
Uh, no.
So.
Twenty three six seventy. I'm the reason why.
Um, I don't wanna speak for them, but I think twenty four thousand is the bare minimum they need to be compliant. Right now, they are the city of Paisley, um, same proposal. They look ultimately like the sixty three or sixty eight thousand, but. That's a big request and they, they acknowledge that, but they really would appreciate the twenty four. So I don't know what they will be reporting today or reporting today, but.
In Paisley. So the reason, just to give you a little background. Our conversation a couple of weeks ago, we talked about several towns, cities haven't asked for financial or. But cares, or haven't used their.
Haven't used any of their care staff.
So I sent an email to, um.
Wrong fault.
Gina at AOC and found out that Paisley had twenty four thousand available. So. I told, uh, John Jones to see what they're gonna do with that one. Because it's gotta be used by the end of this year. And so, um.
Yeah, that's how we went back there. Yeah, he was in my office before that, and I mentioned that the city of Paisley may not have leveraged their care dollars. His initial want was towards a different type of dollars, special district dollars. Which they don't qualify because they're not a special district. So he ended up back to our care dollars. I'm willing to listen to it and everything, but we have to be cognizant that there's multiple, multiple ambulances.
I mean, this was the same predicament that Christmas Valley EMS, North End EMS fell into. Um, because they thought that they required for some of these other funds were only for special districts. And they are not a special district, that's the end.
Yeah, they're, they're being led by the people trying to sell them equipment, is that you qualify for these dollars.
You need to be in special districts, so.
And, and I'm willing to listen, but that stimulated a lot of. Wanting to get to care dollars. So, um, I don't have the number of care dollars that's coming, two hundred and fifty thousand total bucks left of that. So that's what they're looking at, is these care dollars. I, I've not got enough data from the fair lines of the potential requests for care dollars. I don't know what else is out there, um, county operations. That there may be care dollars requested. So, um, for tomorrow, we really do need Ann, or you Mel, if you work with Ann, find out. Or we're setting, even taking into consideration anything on these. So. Saying yay to Ann, I'm just saying, um.
Yeah.
This was all stimulated by salesmen telling me, these ambulances, these volunteer ambulances, you, you deserve these dollars, go get them. And they find out that they're qualified as special districts, so then, you know, they're coming to us.
What if we have to hire somebody for the lobby again to, you know, if we have to close some doors and we have to have somebody in the lobby. Doing that stuff again?
We, we need to know, our, our projections of county requests for the dollars are potential. Right now, we're sitting with some pretty unique things going on, whether it's an executive order or at some time we have an outbreak or what we have to do as a board of commissioners. So we have to sort of possibly look at a next date for worst case scenario between now and December.
And that's employees sick time too.
I'm having a really hard time.
That's employees sick time too, that we need to structure.
Yes, yes, as people.
If they're infected.
People have to be quarantined and different things, there's a lot of things to take, just for discussion, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm not supporting or not supporting it, just those are variables that we need to, to look at. The other thing, um, we're into a hearing process. You guys have reviewed the email we received pertaining to a potential road vacation hearing tomorrow, so I don't want to vary outside of that very much. If you guys haven't reviewed the email we received in my hand, but you have, so I don't want to get into too much discussion because of the hearing process. You know, I, I reached out to Darwin Johnson.
Okay.
But I have, I have seen it and I have read it. So on road vacations, under the truly county roads, that's a road official. And I've spoken with Kevin Hop as well. Is he gonna be able to be on?
He's gonna try, yeah.
But the hearing scheduled, that's slated for one o'clock. So if we can get the road official for that hearing, and I have not touched base with legal counsel, we need legal counsel on tomorrow. Also, and get that information to legal counsel, please, tell me.
I didn't get that email.
Did you not get that email?
I don't think so.
I will send it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, and forward that on to legal counsel, we need to stay on with that, there may be some decisions. Move to the top of the list. So with that, I think, did that just sort of roughly looking at tomorrow's agenda?
Um.
So. There, there's one other thing I wanted to come back to.
Okay, I have one, the, the is on the date, but go ahead.
Okay, I want to come back to public health, it's a different, I didn't want to belabor it with the, with the OHA amendment, and that's not where I'm going. I think during these times, that if either one of you gets opportunity, as we will, whether it's Leah Warner, our food from the governor's office, is. We need help, we need help from the state during these COVID times, and we need it as in a person. Dollars won't do what we need for our public health, and I know we have it contracted out, but we need some assistance. Because of, as we have these cases pop in Lake County, they have to be, somebody has to track them out. And I think all the, all the calls and all the things we are, we're on, I think this is the one thing that we need to tell them is. State of Oregon governor's office, we need help and we need it with a person. And you better vastly start training people to help us do our tracking and to give some relief. Or else we're looking for an out, I'm talking on public health side, if we're running out, walk away. And, and so I'm talking direct, but I'm, I'm talking trying to have you guys push that forward, I can push forward too. But you guys are the ones here, you know, I'm not begging out, there's a whole hard facts I'm leaving. But if we've been through multiple calls, and I'll call them ditch sessions, let's ask for something. Let's ask for some liberation, help, we want a person to help. We want somebody to come get some relief to our public health side. We want you state to train the people. We don't have the, the people with the expertise to hire temporary anything, we don't want you to throw money at it, we want you to throw a person at it. Or a couple, or a, but yes, and, and we're speaking for all of you. It's not just rural or anything. These, these, in our case, these ladies are getting tired.
Well, just think of our job and how it's been so heavy and burdened, and then they, they're having different issues, but the burden isn't any wider. And it does not go away. Does not go away at all. You know, they could, they could leave and go find a walk into your job. If being straight up.
I, I'm, absolutely, that's the reason why I wanted to have the discussion. Do we as a board want to formally put that in formal request to the governor's office? I think we need to have a little request. I, I mean, I don't know for sure, but I've heard other places, primarily short staffed places. People are walking away or potentially from the walkway. They are, we, we have to get some help for that part of it. COVID is real, it is what it is, and there's guidelines that they have to follow. And no matter what anybody says, that's a lot of work, it's a lot of mental stress, you gotta give them some relief. State has to step up at this point. What do you guys think? Well, we, we have to.
I'm actually putting this on a formal, a formal letter request.
To, I, I would say we'd send it to Leah Warner to go on up to the government.
And have to look at it, yeah. I'd like to drive.
Thank you, because you knew where I was going. And, and I want it to be, can you get that to us by four?
No.
I want that, it's, it needs, it needs to be the appropriate way that it's written, James, and you know that. So that, so that we're not hammering them, is that we're really asking for them to help us, this is the reason why we need to help.
I have to sit on top of the duty if I'm.
Absolutely.
Part of that is.
Absolutely, and it's gonna be hard to get any time with her right now.
I know.
And don't be afraid to bring Jill into it. They're, they're all, they're all, if you're willing to look at, put together a draft. On, on the person who supports that.
Okay.
Me too.
You're willing, it won't be done by four?
I.
Okay.
Let's make that.
Find me, sir. We're trying to. Yeah, give me kind of help in case you want to be invited, so you have my support.
Sounds good.
So that's, that's why I wanted to make sure that liaisons on updates, consensus of the board is you'll put a draft together. I can do that. By eight in the morning. No, we, we have, we have an afternoon meeting, I'm not sure if you would have it together by then, but if you did. Because we have a meeting with Leah Warner tomorrow. But don't worry.
Oh, you guys, you guys can have a bitch session without my letter, that's fine, and you don't need, well, I just. You just like articulate everything, don't you?
If it's with your meetings on updates, or.
It will have less swear words than if I write it.
That's true.
I'm already looking at you.
So there's only a couple board members I have to look at, so. Damn it. Liaison update, KCC. Um, working with them through the contract and everything else, Chip is, was supposed to get something by the end of the day, my understanding was, from Emma. Emma and I spoke today, uh, I was gonna, I think I sent it off, I actually pushed the send button, wrote a letter to Jim Bailey. Asking if whether or not the contract prohibited us from sending more than the twenty percent match or contribution. Now, we can send twenty five thousand, we have been sending twenty five, or you know, contributing twenty five thousand for years. And, and we can go all the way up to twenty eight thousand, I believe it is.
Sounds like that would approve.
With approval. But if Casey's contribution is less than, say, a hundred and ten, which I think actually the contract says something like, uh. It can range between, uh, twenty two and twenty five thousand. Or twenty percent whatever match, I mean, I, I can't quite remember the language you kind of, when I was reading it. But I was asking if they don't contribute a hundred and ten, which is the bare minimum, which would make our twenty percent match about twenty two thousand. If they don't contribute their fair share, we'd be contributing less. And the question is, at that point, can we contribute more than twenty two percent? We can still, maybe, can we contribute twenty five thousand? Um, and even though they're not contributing a hundred and ten. I don't like to set that precedence, I prefer, like to see a very bare minimum of a hundred and ten thousand contribution from KCC. Chip was supposed to run the numbers and look at, you know, getting a bare minimum of what we decided that we were not willing to dispense with. What we wanted to have as a service, a person, or it was just one person in a room with a white bullet computer, we wanted that in-person. Um, body, human body there to interact and to speak with the kids and answer questions. And the adults, because it's not just kids that need that service. So we had talked about this in terms of, you know, the idea, right now, KCC is in breach of contract. And we're trying to get this back to a state where even if we have to tighten the belt a little bit, that's fine. But we're hearing like they can't stay within budget. There was talk about having a job description put together because we only wanted one person. But they already have two people. And full-time and part-time, transfers and benefits and everything else that go along with that, that expands the budget well beyond what was actually approved. Because you have the added admin costs that are a percentage based on percentage of the overall budget. that are a percentage, based on percentage of the overall budget. Well, if you shrink the budget up, if you tighten it up a little bit, stay within the confines of the budget, put the admin fees into the actual budget, include them in there, and even their internet wasn't included in the actual budget. Fifteen thousand dollars for internet, and another fifteen thousand broadband. And additionally, they had some special internet services and everything else. So we're going through this, and we're really trying to figure this out, and I just wanted to kind of update you guys with some of that conversation. Wanted to know whether or not, okay, I'll paint a potential here, through thoughts on this, and I kind of already have. If KCC doesn't contribute the hundred and ten thousand, would this board still be willing to contribute twenty-five?
Good question. You articulated things pretty well. Out-of-district contracts, while I'm talking about their agreement with.
No, just, just.
Out-of-district contracts. We're very much aware of how important higher education is. We're, we're very much aware that higher education has been hit hard through these times. So if we were going to, might we continue at the level we are or even higher? It's a one-time, we talked about here. You don't enter into an out-of-district contract that is five years committed to the higher amount. You try to put the Band-Aid on it, so you get to, they get to where they're able to get more services in Lake County. There's been a lot invested in KCC.
Yeah.
We, we as a board, or if you're going to, I'm during your time, we've supported their admin, or not their admin, their, their other, their new building, everything we've contributed to. So for me, I believe that it's times that we need to be as supportive as we can for higher education within reason. And that means be individually, I support your work in a way to, to keep them in a funding, funding to. And if we need to for one year, contribute a little bit more if we're financially able to, because we're getting something for that, our communities, then we should take that into consideration as well.
We, we wouldn't be contributing more than the twenty-eight thousand or the twenty-five thousand that we typically contribute anyway. But we would be contributing more than twenty percent if potentially KCC doesn't, isn't willing to contribute the full one.
As long as it's in writing, this is, this is renegotiated each year, and this does not trump the request agreement. Fully expected if this year you're not able to, the next year you need to get your hundred and ten. Higher education in the presence for several of our citizens, we made a good point, it's not just high school students. There's several adults that are taking advantage of this, and we need to keep lives on the way. We need to keep it. And I molded that over into what's not our obligation over onto.
Yeah.
It, it's hard to make the separation, we got an out-of-district contract and it's dis, but if, when they'll use some of that out-of-district that keeps a presence of somebody in the office along with the school. I, I'm willing, we don't know what our budget's gonna look like this next year. We already have budgeted for up until June, have we already made the payment, Melanie?
No. They're going to be the less for this next year, I'm worried.
Yeah, and that payment's coming up.
Yeah.
And so that's why we're.
And we're budgeted for it, and, and, I'm, if you want, I'm good with making our payment this year.
Okay.
All right, and I'm doing a lot of the talking, which is now the team.
And I have an idea that I can talk with James about after the meeting.
Okay.
But could you ask him?
Necessarily. I, I definitely want to get our money's worth put on the other side of it. They have them, more of them, their share previous to these hard times.
Yeah.
And that's why we're working with you, you know, so maybe we're just paying ahead. So. So if, if you're an executive on the advisory board, if we just straight out ask the advisory board, what are the recommendations of the high venture guests they would recommend supporting Casey's?
Yeah. They, I think it's pretty clear from our point of view that KCC is the one we want to take in advance. You know, I mean, it's the, it's overall, this is, these are the people we, we've been with for a long time. They're our team, and they, I, from my point of view personally, I go again.
He said it, he blamed it on me and you, but he said it four or five times. Well, he, he personally, I'm taking my commissioner's hat off, so we all get tagged with something.
On the north end, the Northlake School, worked really hard. Navy crew especially, worked really hard to try and make that transition from COCC to KCC. And even though that's not officially done and dealt with yet, it was so much better for our kids. And the kids love KCC. The amount of services that our kids got from KCC over the COCC and, and the, just the help and the atmosphere of the campuses and everything else, it was completely different. So I feel like we made a good move in that regard, and I'm really proud of, you know, this board's role in all of that. But, and I don't think that just because we had hard times, and they're having a hard time, and we let that relationship and everything else go to the wayside, I think they really do want to be here for us. But at the same time, we do, as a commissioner, we have a responsibility to play a certain amount of heartball, and make sure that the services are actually being provided, and you know, just kind of let anyone walk over us. That's me being as politically correct as I possibly can on this subject. I know everyone's having a hard time, but people like to play that part too. And in reality, sometimes we, you know, I, I'm finding the problem in the mud, but we, we all gotta go through it together.
This gives us enough to keep a good service within Lake County. As far as I'm concerned, KCC is in Lake County. I appreciate how you just talked about it, like, changing of going from the tax industry, going from COI, or COCC to KCC. That in itself warms us to take into consideration keeping things going for the rest of Lake County. So I'm, I'm, I'm there.
Okay.
Appreciate you, your work on this with the advisory group, this advisory group is very, very questless. Make sure they have how much we appreciate them.
Yeah, I think so, I think Emma really understands that, and she's wanting to stay in close communication with us. The other thing is AOC. Talk with AOC, it looks like we have some changes coming down the horizon of payment structure for dues. And Melanie, have you been seeing any of that?
Arc showing.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm a little frustrated with that. I believe you got a phone call from Lyle Moorehorst. Lyle and I have been talking on and off for a couple of weeks. Lyle's on the membership committee, and they, they've got two options basically they're looking at. And for changing it, one of them, Lake County pays a little bit more, the other one would pay a lot more, basically. Everyone's paying, very few counties are paying less. And I was, I think there's only, in one of the options, I think that one county is paying a little bit less. Douglas is paying like a couple thousand dollars less or something, I can't remember what it is. But anyway, I was looking at them, and I was evaluating, and I didn't want to be just saying, I'll go for this option because this is best for me. I think trying to take everything into consideration, looking out for all of our neighbors and evaluating what's best for all the county, what's fair. I was really struggling with it and going through it, and I formulated a letter on the Senate and off the membership committee. And then I heard about something else, that the audit committee, finances, has decided, not only are they going to give employees a pay raise of ten percent per year. For ten percent per year, but they are.
AOC.
What?
All were AOC.
I believe so. But also, and, and they, and this is my understanding of it. They, and I'm playing phone tag with George Murdock, who's the chairman of that committee, and so we're going back and forth a little bit. But also, they wanted to change the rules so that the executive committee and that committee itself would make the decision on all these things without any input from other counties. And they could just make these decisions, and typically, we have AOC day.
You really want me to get going on this?
Well, so I'm just, so I don't, I don't want to go, go real deep into it, and I understand. And if you're, if you want to come and talk to me later, you're more than welcome to share some of this input. But the thing that I always struggling with, and what I, I called Melissa Lindsay, who is the commissioner of Moro County, she's, she's going for the treasurer position. And I think she's got a good head on her shoulders, she'd be probably really good for it. She'd be taking Alex Tardis' position. Alex has sat on there for a couple of years now. When we first came on, you remember, AOC was in the middle of a financial crisis, and it took them a couple of years, and two thousand nineteen was the first bit of light that we really saw, and then getting through all that.
Well, they did get through it without us counties stepping up.
And, and, and.
Every county paid.
And we all.
I think we made like sixteen thousand, I can't remember.
And it was, it, it was very bothersome, and all of us were all sitting there like, what is this? So this goes back to my other comment about crawling around mud sometimes, you know, I think we all get in hard times sometimes. We all share in the hard times, and we all get through it together. While I'm sitting here, having a moral dilemma of which option do I choose for the dues? Because I'm just as worried about my neighboring counties than I am for mine, when my only real responsibility is to look out for the best interests of my county. AOC, the organization that's supposed to be advocating for all counties, is getting paid this in the middle of two thousand forty. So, and we're all gonna have to pay for that, whether it's a million bucks extra or whatever else that they'd be able to raise from the increase in these dues.
So I, I have to talk a little bit.
Yes, sir, absolutely, I just, I want to show this with you, because I think it's important, we haven't had a chance to talk about this.
In twenty years, I've missed one AOC conference. And the business meeting on Thursdays usually is, and with the least attended, other than those of us that are quite interested. We got a full packet as the board, the whole body of the budget, a full budget. We knew everything, every, a few years ago, and you know I like to, a few years ago, they changed that in the executive committee, now we're getting a general budget. And I never stepped up, because I questioned some of the things within the budget in my own mind. I wasn't involved at the level I probably should have. I questioned the hiring of a lot more staff in my own mind, to follow up on it. And I kicked myself wondering if we hadn't paid those extra dues, because I think I'd seen it coming. I think I did. So for AOC to change the structure even one more time is that the executive committee makes the decision on the budget and all those things, and the body of, of an association doesn't get that, we just get an overview. Isn't the duty of commissioners that pay the dues that we pay? And we pay a substantial amount relative to our size. And then you go to the big county, go to Homewood County, and those others, and look at the amount of dues they pay. Commissioners, as a whole, as the body, deserves to see the whole picture.
Really.
Really see my whole picture. Really need to see the whole picture. One reason why I think some of the structure and the cost went up is our state legislature. And no longer do we only have a full session every other year. Short session that's turned in for people to bring bills in, they bring in, the government can bring things in, each senatorly trip, get so many in a short session. So the workload on AOC is one reason why you see more staff and more cost. And, and so I have to sort of defend that side of it somehow. That, that is governed because of association in Oregon County, our director, our legal counsel there, all of those people representing for their places, the roadside, or it's the public health side, is now doing almost twice as much work every year compared to what it used to be. So we, we have to acknowledge that and see how we can have efficiencies in what we as the body, all thirty-six counties, want out of AOC and close that view. The thing is, is that they might not have taken a raise for seven years, and they're just trying to catch up. I don't know that for a fact.
Well, and that's what I wanted to talk to George about, because apparently, from my understanding, Commissioner Murdock out of Unitella County was a little frustrated over this change, even though he's the chair. And he said he didn't want to make the decision, because he hadn't heard any kind of opposition or any, any kind of input from other counties. And he was frustrated that no one had really reached out or given input. And I, what I told Commissioner Moorehorst was, well, we didn't know this was even taking place. This was even on the table.
Is this decision going to be made at this conference right now?
I don't know. I don't think so.
They've made a order.
That.
It just came out.
Yeah, I saw that.
So if this is on the agenda for this conference that's going on right now as we speak in the mornings.
I'm trying to talk to George tonight, so I'll have that info for you guys tomorrow morning.
Okay.
But it's not politically correct. Honestly, I feel like we've, when they, when the cat's away, the mouse will play. And we've been out of sale now for quite a while. We haven't made a single AOC day. We haven't been able to be there present, we haven't had the conversations. This is another one of the impacts, where, you know, that long-term isolation, we're, we're not able to get business done in a way that we used to. It doesn't mean that we can't get it done, it doesn't mean that we can't be successful. Just means that this has been another one of the great challenges. And I think AOC, we, we need to participate, be just as involved as ever with AOC now, because.
So I didn't make the district, we did, our district.
Ah, yeah.
Was there a discussion about this, didn't?
No.
Oh.
No.
None, there was, this, this, honestly, this, I was at the district, I was on the district meeting.
Who was the district?
It's around.
Yeah, it was, on the. But the.
So District Two, we should pull together as a District Two for our AOC district, and have some of this discussion, the chair of District Two, now is Pete Roberts.
Yeah.
Used to be Tony Devan. But I would, I would think that a District Two meeting, as I've been intending, would be very important.
I tried calling Pete, to get a hold of him, so I tried calling Patty Dora, she knew nothing about it either. She, she had not heard, and she hasn't had any kind of updates from AOC or Pete.
Well, AOC should be, you know, probably.
See, well, what I'm told is that a lot of the decisions around salaries of the individuals were made in, in executive session. And some of the decisions in terms of, I think it was a seven percent actual total increase in wage, but if you add on all the other things and on their salary and everything else, it actually came out to a ten percent increase guaranteed every year.
So that's fringe and everything.
You lost all, all the other things.
Sometimes your healthcare, you can't control that and make a lot of fifteen percent, which averages out or what. Some, some, I call it fringe, it's not fringe, some of your fully loaded costs, it sounds like they're giving a ten percent raise, which they are, but it's, sometimes it's dictated by.
And it may be, but.
That, that's what you were clear on.
Yes, it may be. And so Lyle Moorehorse was frustrated with it. And he spoke some opposition to it that no one else spoke up.
So I'll put, I, I gotta go here. I think AOC is by far our best ally for statewide and for everything. I think the opportunity to help hold the direction that goes from here forward, I'm very supportive of the director we have now. Very supportive. So.
She's been more active.
Her outside of the mountain, anybody ever has. And, and so it's, I've seen some of this come out, but I'd encourage you, I'm glad you're bringing it forward, to ask the questions. And then, then that gives the, like, the board here a way to look at, what do we get out of AOC for our dues? You know, why, why do we support AOC? I guess comparative and lobbyists or something like that. I really think the two of you and Commissioner Webber, I think we're have an opportunity to promote AOC that goes forward in a very positive way. And I encourage you guys to use them every day you can. The only justification I can see for adding cost to the budget change is our short sessions are not like long sessions used to be.
Right.
And that takes a lot of work.
I get it. You know, that's, that goes back to my point. I'm not saying that people don't work the time, the energy, and the extra pay because they are generally, and I love my AOC staff, and everyone's always so good to work with. But again, it goes back to what I was saying, when times are tough, we all go through the mud together. I haven't taken a pay raise, you haven't taken a pay raise, you haven't taken a pay raise, we're all struggling. All of our counties are struggling right now. And here I am in this dilemma of taking this option for an increase in dues or this one. Put aside the fact which one's best for me, I'm looking for what's best for other counties, but the organization is supposed to be looking out for all of us. So I can raise.
I agree. I really have to go to the bathroom, so we are a little cold, or I got to. No, that's, that's the problem with you, you can go.
We will have, we still have a corner.
I, I don't think we have anything further than before, just do any other thing.
No, I wanted to give you the, I'll have more info for you guys tomorrow morning.
All right.
I'll talk with the chair.
What's, what's the journey?
The journey.
The journey, seventeen minutes?
Danielle wants to get out of here.